I think it's, I really wanted to have a quick survey of the, um...
He was just taxing your taxes? You what? Testing, testing. Okay.
That was a short few minutes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so our speaker sheet, we have Joel Windmiller.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Joel Windmiller. I'm the current chapter president for Lincoln Highway for California. I'd like to speak to you this evening concerning installation of 12 historic Lincoln Highway signs along Lincoln Way, Church, and Church Street. I prepared a little speech here on the history of the highway. I'd like to, as I said, I'd like to thank the council for allowing me to speak this evening. Lincoln Highway, what is that? Well, before highways were numbered prior to 1926, they all had common names. And the Abraham Lincoln Memorial Highway was the greatest of them all. A dream of Carl Fisher, builder of the Indianapolis Motor Speedway and president of the Prestolite Corporation, maker of the settling gas lights for auto cars. The Lincoln Highway was the first transcontinental highway between Times Square in New York and Lincoln Highway, Lincoln Park in San Francisco, California, often referred to as the first road across America, or main street of America. Excuse me, I've got a frog in my throat. Drivers following Lincoln Highway through cities and towns across states plus the ultimate coast-to-coast tour of the Lincoln Highway, passing through historic city of Galt on their way to San Francisco or Sacramento, before heading east over to Sierra Nevada. Placement of historic signs would help guide travelers along the 1913 alignment, Lincoln Highway and also former US Highway 99, and went through Galt along Lincoln Way, Church, on Church Street. The 1913 through 1928 alignment went through the town of Galt before being realigned after the completion of the Carte d'Isle Bridge in 1928. After that, the highway from Sacramento to San Francisco followed Interstate 80. The chapter would like to donate 12 signs for this project. Proposed locations would be at the following locations: Coast Road and South Lincoln Way, Church and G Street, A and North Lincoln Way, Elm and North Lincoln Way, Simmerhorn Road and North Lincoln Way. If you have any comments or suggestions, you're more than welcome to email the chapter. Again, I'd like to thank everybody for time to express my thoughts on historic signage for downtown Galt. Elm Grove, no. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I also have an example of the signage that is proposed for North Lincoln Way. Thank you very much. Sorry, I was a little nervous tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Sounds like a great idea.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we have no further public comment. We'll move on to the information consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Campion, and a second by Vice Mayor Payne. There's no further discussion. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne, aye. Councilmember Hewer, aye. Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Passes four oh. Moving on to scheduled matters. We'll be calling a public hearing approving and adopting resolutions calling a special election, declaring the results of an election, and annexing property into Community Facilities District Number 2005-1, Public Safety Services, Annexation Number 7.
Mayor and council members, this item is a result of requirements of conditions of approval for several properties, including Mr. Guttridge's most recent subdivision of 23 lots and a parcel split proposal for the westerly end of, help me, Bill, what's?
Poplar.
Poplar Street. And this is actually an accelerated process tonight, which we'll walk you through with our last slide. And we were actually able to knock 90 days out of a normal voter approval process because there are no registered voters within the proposed annexation areas as they're vacant ground at this time. So we'll talk more about that in a minute. And tonight, Mr. Bill Forrest will give you a quick flyover of what's being proposed.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Bill Forrest with your City of Galt Public Works Department. Community Facilities District Number 2005-1 is for, a Melrose District for Public Safety Services, both police and fire. It was formed in 2005, i.e. the number. And the map on display is all the parcels that are currently within the district. The last annexation was back in 2007. And started with Schmidt Ranch and River Oaks 3, and then added Morale Estates, Meadows, Mr. Guttridge's Creekside 2, Unit 2, Creekside 3, Creekside 4, Legacy Estates. The action before you, as mentioned, is to annex Emerald Park Unit Number 22, which is Mr. Guttridge's development on the east side of East Stockton Boulevard, and then, as mentioned, a two-lot parcel map split at the west end, north of Poplar Street nestled against the railroad. And so we're taking advantage of bringing forward Mr. Guttridge's development and tying in the annexation of the parcel map. Next one, please. And so this is just a close-up detail of the four parcels that are being annexed within the district. The 25-lot subdivision of Emerald Park 22 is comprised of these three parcels. And then this is a disjoint map. That's the two-lot parcel map at the west end. And as mentioned, we'll pull up and Steve, Mr. Winkler, will walk you through the recommendations as they're very step-specific and orders.
We are following a state code for how we can do this accelerated process. We actually have four actions before you tonight. And the first one would be to open a public hearing to determine if there are concerns or protests from the existing six annexation areas plus the original district as to taking in additional properties to share the tax burden with them. And absent a majority protest, we would then ask that you call for any remaining ballots for the proposed annexations. And we believe there is one ballot outstanding as of this afternoon. And then announce the results. And absent a two-thirds majority, we would ask you to declare the election results and then introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance that would effectuate bringing those new properties into the district and levying the special tax for the district upon those in the forthcoming tax year. So with that, I would recommend you open the public hearing and ask if there are any concerns or comments.
With that, the public hearing is now opened. Seeing no one who wishes to come forward and speak,
I'd recommend that you have the clerk call for any remaining ballots and then announce the results of the abdicated ballots received.
Are there any remaining ballots? Seeing that there aren't any, I received one official ballot from property owner 4GS Development Company, who has a number of votes, nine qualified landowner votes for 10. I have a vote yes on nine of them.
Very good.
It's a per acre, one acre, one vote. And so the larger parcel sort of carried the day, and that would be Mr. Guttridge's votes. And so there's a 90% approval. And with that, I would recommend that you adopt a resolution declaring those results as set forth in your packet. Following that, introduce and waive the reading of the ordinance, and that will move it forward.
I believe before I do, I need to close the public hearing, correct?
Um, yes, please.
Okay, public hearing is officially closed.
There's actually two resolutions in your packet and one ordinance. So you can, I'd recommend that you move, you can move the resolutions together or separately and then do a separate action on the ordinance.
I move to approve both resolutions. As one motion.
We have a motion by, motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Hewer. We have no further discussion. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne, aye. Councilmember Hewer, aye. Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Vote is four oh.
Motion to introduce and waive full reading of the ordinance, authorizing the levy of the special tax.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Hewer. Do you have any further discussion?
Vice Mayor Payne, aye. Councilmember Hewer, aye. Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Again, we have your unanimous vote. Okay. Moving on to subject number two. City of Galt Landscaping and Lighting District Number 3, public hearing, approval of engineer's report and levying of annual assessments for fiscal year 2015, 2016.
Mr. Mayor and council members, this second item is an annual process to levy the prescribed landscape and lighting district fees for three of the city's districts. And Mr. Bill Forrest will give you a brief overview of the process. And we're going to make one presentation covering all three. We do recommend at the end that you have separate public hearings so we can ascertain which comments pertain, if any, to which district.
Good evening. Bill Forrest again. Slight correction, this is for the annual assessments for fiscal year 2016, 2017. To that end, on June 28, 2016, the council heard a report of intention to levy, and this is the necessary public hearing and approval of the engineers' reports and levying of the annual assessments. West Side Galt Lighting, Landscaping and Maintenance District 1990-02 is the parcels that you see on the exhibit before you. A little bit of a misnomer, it's, there's some parcels on the east side of the freeway, so you take what you can get. There were no additional annexations or properties or subdivisions of existing parcels. The assessments have been fixed since the district formation in 1990. During past council meetings, has reported that expenditures have been exceeding revenues, and I'll touch upon that at the conclusion of the three. The approved budget for the West Side District includes moderate service reductions to get their expenditures in line with the revenue. The Northeast Galt Landscaping Line District is comprised of the northeast area, specific plan area. There were no new annexations, but there was a subdivision of three parcels into the 25-lot Emerald Park Unit Number 22, so the unit count did go up. Again, the assessments are fixed since the district formation. And for this fiscal year, the general fund subsidy to the northeast area district of approximately $155,000 to balance the fund. Landscaping Line District Number 3 is the most recently created in 2005. What's different about this district is that there's a CPI, Consumer Price Index, and factor to the increase in the assessment. This year, the CPI had been kind of hovering at the, below the 1.5, which is the minimum well increase. This year, the CPI has increased to 2.63%, so the assessment was increased by that factor. assessment was increased by that factor. Um, there were no new annexations or subdivisions, um, to the District Number Three, and for this fiscal year, there will be a general fund subsidy to the district of approximately As mentioned, uh, particularly for the West Side Northeast, um, the assessments have been unchanged since the nineteen nineties. Um, count, uh, staff has, uh, come to council to award a consulting contract, and we're actually studying all three L and L districts. Um, and recommendations will be coming back to the council sometime later this year. Um, and just a reminder, any increase in the annual assessments for the districts would be subject to a formal approval, and that will be wrapped up into the, uh, proposed recommendations, uh, to council, uh, via Prop two eighteen. And a recommendation, as mentioned, is to conduct, uh, separate public hearings for each of the district. I have them in order as they are in the agenda. Lighting and Landscaping District Number Three, then the Northeast, and then the West Side, and then at the conclusion, in closing of the public hearings, can, uh, adopt the resolutions approving the engineers' reports and the levying of the annual assessments. Any questions?
You seem to have a question, sir.
Well, Mr. Mayor, just before you proceed, I just want to modify the, uh, approach a little bit. I think you're getting a little bit inconsistent, uh, suggestions, so what I would recommend is you just, uh, go through each item as it appears on the agenda. You read item K two into the record so far. Uh, L and L District Number Three, I'd recommend you just move forward with the public hearing on that district, adopt the resolution, and then move on to item three on the agenda.
That works. With that, we will open the public hearing on, on the Northeast Galt Landscaping and Lighting District.
And this is for fiscal year sixteen seventeen, which is a correction from, I think, what the agenda states.
Correct.
Isn't the first?
First one's, uh, district number three.
Number three.
District number three, not North Side.
On the agenda.
He said northeast.
My apologies.
Okay.
City of Galt Landscaping and Lighting District Number Three.
You just closed it or opened it?
Opened it. Seeing no comments, we will close that hearing.
Motion, uh, to approve, adopt the, uh, resolution and levy the annual assessment.
I have a motion by Councilmember Campion. Do I have a second?
I have a question before we vote.
Sure. Okay.
Uh, I'm just curious, um, the, this covers some parks and, um, facilities maintenance. Does any of the money from the flea market go towards this?
Not that I'm aware of. And none of the money from the flea market should be contributing to an L and L district.
To the park.
So the answer there would be no.
Okay. I think it's confusing sometimes because people think that the revenue from the flea market goes to support the park, uh, so then there might be a question as to whether, you know, um...
I might be able to answer that. Uh, the flea market, uh, revenue will go into Fund O Six, where there are parks in those six funds that are maintained by that. So the Sports Complex, Harvey Park, Meadowview Park, those are all O Six parks. They're not, uh, covered by an L and L, so those have to be maintained through O Six.
Okay. So none of the, uh, revenue from the flea market goes into the L and L at all?
No.
Okay.
With the exception, wouldn't you, through the cost allocation, if you have personnel working there, you'd have an abatement from the L and L to whatever appropriate fund?
There might be some piece of, um, abatement that goes back from the L and L to, on Six, but it would be pretty de minimis.
Be personnel.
Right. But I think that in this case, where we have, how we are paying the personnel that are doing this work is, I think, through payable, we have them distributed to the fund where they're spending their time, rather than paying them via the cost allocation.
Okay.
For the parks worker.
You can answer this, Armando. We still, I mean, we really still are trying to look for ways to reduce the cost of the L and Ls, correct? I mean, I mean, it's just, we just seem to be going further and, you know, every year it seems to be more that, that we're having to, um, we seem to have more and more come out of the general fund, and I know we cut some services last year. Um, we cut some, we're not, uh, landscaping as often, we're not trimming as often.
We, we only did that to the West Side L and L to balance the fund last year.
So it's out of the way, okay. So the other districts, we haven't cut any services from?
At this point, no.
Okay.
I have seconds, a motion.
Question. Is there a reason we haven't looked at the other districts, given that it's almost a two-hundred-thousand-dollar-a-year subsidy, that we wouldn't have cut services?
I, it was a discussion at the department head level that, I think, Steve or Gene, you might want...
Maybe I could help, and then Gene, it, it actually started under the former city manager, where we have yet to go to the voters or the district residents and, um, justify or request a rate increase. And the thought was, before we cut services, we ought to give them the opportunity to at least have a chance to say, well, we're willing to pay more to not have our parks go brown or not have our medians go unkempt. Uh, and then that led to the current consultant study, which is two of the districts were pre-prop two eighteen, and part of the reason that the cost and the subsidies sort of seem to be going up is they're frozen in time without an escalator, so as costs go up with inflation, revenues stay, stay flat, and so the backfill is bigger every year. Um, and so it's coming to the point where we've burned through the reserves, uh, over the last decade, and we're now going to either have to cut services or voters are going to need to approve a supplemental revenue source. And, um, that's the study that's underway, is to, to look at what are our options, what are the recommended approaches, um, because, uh, we can't go another year at this rate without some major peril to the general fund.
Exactly. Okay, well, so we, we're hoping to have the resolution before, within the next year, is that what you're saying? Okay. That's correct. Thank you.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Campion and a second by Councilmember Hewer. Do we have any further discussion? Can I call for the vote, please?
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. So four oh vote. Now we will open the public hearing for the Northeast Galt Landscaping and Lighting District. Seeing no one who wishes to make a comment on it, we will close the public hearing.
Motion to approve, to adopt the resolution.
Motion by Councilmember Hewer, second by Councilmember Campion. We have discussion. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Four oh vote. Last item, we will open the public hearing on the West Side Galt Lighting, Landscaping and Maintenance District nineteen ninety dash two. Seeing no comment, we will close the hearing. Can I take a motion?
Uh, move to approve the resolution as well as, uh, levy into the annual assessment.
I have a motion by Councilmember Campion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hewer. Any further discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Okay, four oh again. Moving on, item number five, approval of the nineteen, uh, excuse me, twenty fifteen Urban Water Management Plan update. Mr. Winkler.
Mr. Mayor and council members, this next item, um, is a five-year update, um, to the city's required urban water management plan. And Alice Fernadino, uh, is one of our young, rising engineers in our department, and, uh, she did a lot of the legwork, uh, with the consultant who prepared the report, uh, who is also represented here tonight if we have technical questions on the actual, uh, management plan update. And, uh, Alicia's going to give us a, a quick, uh, flyover for what this is all about.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Um, I will be going over the twenty fifteen Urban Water Management Plan update. Um, I didn't get the quick...
Right.
Um, so recommending that you receive, uh, this presentation, open for a public hearing, and adopt the Urban Water Management Plan. Some background on the document, uh, this document is required by the Urban Water Management Planning Act of nineteen eighty-three. Um, we fit the criteria for those who have to submit the document. Um, its purpose is to make sure that we are meeting our water conservation targets. This document is required if we want to apply for grants or loan programs. Uh, the, the state requires that we coordinate and notify other agencies. Um, so the first, uh, three departments, uh, are from our city, and we coordinated with them to compile information for the document. Uh, the rest of the agencies, including the public, were notified of the adoption. Uh, this is a schematic of our, uh, water system within our city, um, our sphere of influence. Uh, we have over ninety miles of water main spanning from one to twenty-four inches in diameter. Uh, we have eight active wells and five water treatment plants throughout the city. Um, this is, the first table is a, um, it, it shows our projected demands to twenty forty, assuming that we have a, uh, we made an assumption that our, uh, water demand will increase by two percent annually. The, um, the water, the second table here is our actual water consumption for the year twenty fifteen. Uh, CII is commercial, industrial, institutional, and the unbilled authorized consumption is, uh, the water we use to backwash water filter, uh, media filters at the water treatment plant and when we flush our hydrants. This is a summary of our baseline and target. So the baseline is just an average, uh, gallons per capita per day over a ten-year period, which is, uh, from the year two thousand to two thousand and nine. Um, so, uh, we use that to get our twenty twenty and twenty fifteen target. Um, you'll see that our, um, actual, um, twenty fifteen gallons per capita per day meets both our twenty twenty and twenty fifteen targets, and that's just because the city was successful in conserving water. Uh, now, some plans that we have are to update the ordinances, uh, continue educating the public, quantifying our losses, uh, so that we can meet our twenty twenty target again. And now that I recommend, um, to hold a public hearing, receive comments, close the hearing, and adopt the Urban Water Management Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, this public hearing is open. Seeing no comments, I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution approving the twenty fifteen Urban Water Management Plan and authorizing its finalization and submittal to the State Department of Water Resources?
Just have a quick question.
Sure.
On, on the, I was looking at the staff report, on the, uh, on the second page, it talks about the projections, and then it gives, uh, an acre-foot usage. And I'm just curious, on, what were the, what were the actual, uh, per, uh, capita per day numbers? Were those escalated through, through that, uh, s- uh, scale? Or did it remain at one hundred and, was it one hundred and fifty-two gallons? I guess that's for the two fifteen, so was it, was there an incremental increase in that, um, for purposes of coming up with the totals up to two thousand and forty?
So I think, um, this is the same table that's in our staff report on the top there, and, uh, again, we assumed a, a steady growth rate of how many percent? Two percent estimated projected growth, and then ran that through our usage models to come up with these projected demands.
On the two percent growth, but was, was there an inflator on the gallons per, per e, per, per person?
We started with the, the actual twenty fifteen numbers.
One fifty-two.
And then added projected additional demand based on that two percent growth.
Okay, okay. So it's a two, two percent escalator, is what you're saying?
Yes. I'm looking at staff to make sure I'm telling the truth here.
So do I have a motion?
I'll so move to approve, adopt the resolution approving the twenty fifteen Urban Water Management Plan and authorizing its finalization and submittal to the State Department of Water Resources.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Hewer, dual seconds by Vice Mayor Payne and Councilmember Campion. Take one. We'll give it to Vice Mayor Payne. Do we have any further discussion? And call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. That's Janice Lee-Foro. Okay, moving on to regular calendar, City Manager's Office, Strategic Plan Quarterly Update. Mr. Palazza?
Mayor, Members of the Council, good evening. The, uh, strategic plan document was adopted, uh, by the City Council, and we have a kind of a, a, a formal document that we distributed to the councils on our website that outlines the, uh, city's mission, vision, values, goals, and kind of priority projects throughout the year. Uh, one of the tools that we're using to track and kind of keep ourselves accountable on getting the projects, you know, completed, uh, is kind of a matrix document that we put together, uh, that you found on your DAS, and it was in the packet. I apologize if the packet document, uh, comes out, you know, very clear, uh, so we provided this to you. Uh, and this is a document or a tool that we would like to use, uh, to report back to the council on a quarterly basis, uh, on the updates, you know, of those projects and where we're at. So tonight, I just wanted to introduce that, be someone to our quarterly report for, uh, um, capital improvement projects, you know, that we do. You know, we'll keep it on the same timing. Uh, if there's questions, you know, that the council has, you know, we can answer those. I wasn't going to go through, uh, each project, uh, but, uh, either, you know, this evening or, you know, individually, if, you know, people have questions on projects, you know, please, you know, come see me and we'll, uh, go over that.
Is this online also?
I believe so. If it's not, we'll, we'll get it online.
Okay, thank you.
My only observation, and maybe it's just me, I would like to see a bigger font you use.
Me too.
You can do that. I mean, I can read it, but it's very difficult.
It's not just you, it's me as well. It is, it is hard to read, so we'll get...
It might be a little more lengthy, I guess you could duplex it, but yeah.
That's why I was wondering, is it online, where we can make it bigger?
Yeah. We have a confirmation, it goes on the website. Okay, we have no further questions, we'll move on to the Finance Department. Public Educational and Governmental Funding, Ms. Boyd.
Uh, good evening. Uh, Mr. Matt Markout, our IT manager, is going to present this item.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Uh, I'm very happy to announce that we once again, uh, applied for and received a grant funding, uh, from the Sacramento Metro Cable Television Commission to perform upgrades on our broadcast media infrastructure. Um, you noticed tonight, and it wasn't planned, it just happened, um, we had audio issues. Um, so, so some of, some of the upgrades that are coming will help address some of that. Um, they will also help address, uh, media controls, so, uh, what Steve is managing over here on the laptop, uh, presentations will actually be able to come in from multiple sources, including, uh, somebody walking in with, say, an iPad or a tablet, uh, being able to actually connect in and, and show things up on the screens. Um, cable management, what you, uh, see on the DAS today, where there's, what cable management, what you see on the DAS today, thanks, Mark, uh, uh, will disappear a little bit because we've got pop-up devices that will come up out of the tables, uh, and so they'll be able to plug devices in that way, uh, so we'll clean up the, uh, DAS a little bit. We're also adding mi- microphones to the, uh, staff table, so fixed. Um, if you recall, a few meetings ago, we had an individual who pretty much was talking like this, and you couldn't hear them because they were talking over the microphone. So the fixed microphones, microphones should fix that, along with what are called boundary microphones. So we're adding some of those components in, as well as some, uh, materials behind the scenes that control the... that control the system as a whole. We're also adding reference monitors in the community room, which is our overflow room. We have more people than this room will, room will hold, as well as in the council conference room. So basically, people can be apprised as to what's going on in this room at the same time while holding a meeting or whatever they're doing in the other room, to know that they need to get back in here if, you know, something's going on or whatever. So we're adding a little bit of reference capability that way. Additionally, we're adding reference tablets to the DAS, which in YOAL's case will also double as your aging laptops today. Those, they will replace those, basically. So we've got quite a few things we're adding. The one other piece, the fixed microphones, will actually cause the carpet in this room to be replaced because we have to do sockets through the, through the floors. The grant is actually providing a lot of things to, we will bolster and improve the room as well as appearance to the audience as a whole. So in the past, IT has managed the project and under finance, we will, you know, continue to do that in collaboration with the clerk and the city manager and Public Works. Due to the varying times that council chambers are available, we'll be kind of squeezing it in through the year. We expect to be done by the end of March. That will be just in time for us to do our requests for the next, next year. And of course, we'll be monitoring things as we go throughout the year to figure out what's the next things that we need to improve upon. So we've received one hundred seventy-six thousand seven hundred twenty dollars, which is, I believe, our largest paid grant to date. And there's no financial impact to the city because all of it's funded through the grant. Staffing impact should be modest, especially with the addition of the new IT analyst position. Thank you for proving that in the budget. And so tonight, we're asking council to accept the paid funding by approving a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign the paid funding agreement and appropriating the project funding as described in the staff report. And with this, if you have any questions, you can answer them.
Council, do we have questions? No questions.
Just like to tell you, thank you. Yeah.
The only comment that I would have is, in everything that you mentioned, I'm just hoping that we can have more consistent reliability with our system. Do you think that will happen with these upgrades that you're talking about?
We are sure hoping so. One, one thing, if you did notice, while yes, we did have sound recording issues tonight, the microphones as a whole have been picking up much better. And that's because we did add some, we did change out some equipment recently. So for instance, Lori and yourself, for a little while, those two microphones were kind of, you know, hit and miss. And those are already improving. One of the other functions that we're doing as well is we're splitting the management control. So what the folks in the media control room receive, they can raise and lower the volumes all they want and they won't affect anything in here. And Donna can raise and, raise and lower the volumes in, in here and not affect the video feed. And so that should additionally help stabilize things as well.
Okay. Seems like there's always room for improvement with these technical issues.
Technology always has it.
And we can't use any of this money for personnel, can we? It has to be just, just for infrastructure?
That is correct. That is correct. We can use it for the contractors doing the work, but no additional service or maintenance.
Well, I look forward to going more paperless than actually having, getting rid of our aging laptops.
Looking for a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hewer and a second by Councilmember Campion. Do we have any further discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Member Janice Foro vote. Moving on to the Police Department. You're getting ahead of me. Ordinance adding Chapter 10 dash 16 to the Galt Municipal Code regarding vehicles for sale on public streets. You stop me.
As Mayor Members of Council, tonight, we're introducing of adding an ordinance into the Galt Municipal Code. The ordinance is proposed to prohibit parking of any vehicles on any street or public land that appear to be selling their cars as a de facto used car lot sales of their vehicles. The act of selling a car in a public street invites prospective buyers onto the streets themselves. It creates a safety hazard. And the parking of those vehicles is a distraction to other drivers. So it's also a safety hazard for the pedestrians that are walking around. Part of our biggest concerns in the area is our C Street, Civic, and Caroline, where we have a lot of pedestrian traffic. It also, you know, whenever there's a used car si, sales, for sale sign in the window, you know, people are driving by trying to memorize those, those license, the phone numbers and everything else in the cars and causes a distraction also. So we, in the Police Department, look at that as a nuisance and a safety issue. And so with that, I ask the city attorney to drop an ordinance.
So whenever we're asked to draw an ordinance up that regulates signs, one of the initial concerns that I always have is First Amendment issues because even, even though these signs are in, in vehicles, we have the same First Amendment, freedom of speech right. And in fact, there is, are examples within the case law of the state of cities attempting to regulate the sale of vehicles, putting signs in vehicles for sale on, on city streets and having those ordinances being struck down by, by the courts. So the approach that we have chosen and recommended for your consideration this evening is there's actually a provision in the vehicle code, section 22651.9. And it provides that a warning can be placed on vehicles that have a placard in the vehicle indicating that the vehicle is for sale. And if the officer believes that the primary purpose is in fact to advertise the sale of that vehicle, fixes the notice to the vehicle indicating that if there's a repeat violation within the next thirty days, that the vehicle can be in fact impounded. If in fact, a vehicle is impounded under this provision, there's a requirement for a hearing to be held within a reasonable period of time after the impoundment of the vehicle. So what this vehicle code provision does require, however, that is that the city actually by ordinance authorize the implementation of this section in the city. So the ordinance that's in your packet actually matches the precise wording of the vehicle code. And if City Council chooses to adopt this ordinance, it would serve to essentially effectuate this vehicle code provision within the city of Galt. It would enable our officers to in fact start to place warnings on vehicles in the areas that the chief indicated are problematic. We're hoping that the replacement of the warning alone will solve a substantial portion of the problem. And we won't, will not have to resort on a very regular basis to the second step, which is the impoundment of the vehicles. Happy to answer any questions the council has.
This doesn't apply to someone if they have a vehicle, a motorcycle, on their own driveway? They can still try to...
No, it would not. If it's on private property, it would not apply. This is just for vehicles that are advertised for sale, they're on a, a public street. And it is clear to the, to the officer by virtue of the placement of the vehicle, but that really is the primary purpose. So if you had, you know, on a, just a routine public street, you know, a car just happens to be there with a sale sign in it, may be very likely that the person is there conducting business. But when you go to some of the areas that the chief has outlined, where there's three, four, or five vehicles that are in line, the for sale sign in them, it's pretty easy to make the case that the vehicles are there for the primary purpose of being sold. And, and that kind of activity takes away parking from folks that would otherwise be there for other purposes.
I think it's a good idea. I like the ordinance. I know especially on C Street, on flea market days, it's like a used car lot. And there are people walking around the cars, even actually in the street, which is dangerous. So I think it's a good idea.
I have a question. On the, so the ordinance allows you to warn the driver and if in, within the following thirty days, they are found guilty of the same issue, then it's an automatic impoundment? There isn't an option for citation?
No, it's a, it's not an automatic impoundment. And that's not really our intent. Our intent is to issue the warnings, especially in congested areas. I, I can't see this where we would be trolling the entire city and looking for signs on cars. That's, that's really not our intent. Our intent is to provide some safety for those that are on foot and driving around in congested areas. So, and then what we would do is we'd issue the warning, but it's an administrative, there's a lot of administrative paperwork involved in that. So we'd issue the, the warning, hoping that we would get compliance that way. And, you know, there's other means that you can contact the registered owner and let them know and hopefully get compliance that way, long before we ever get to that point of multiple warning citations and then have to resort to any kind of impoundment. This, that certainly isn't our intent.
And the, and the, the warning, is it in the form of a ticket or is it going to be one of those adhesive stickers? And the only reason I ask is, you know, if someone loses it in the next thirty days, he, or loses several of them, then all of a sudden, he finds out his car's gone. So I, I mean, what type of notification, what physically is going to be left at the vehicle?
It's a, it's a written citation, but we use data ticket as our server, as our processor of citations. And so there's a whole written series of documentation that goes along with it that's sent out to the registered owner's house.
Okay.
Well, we approved earlier in the budget, parking enforcement, is that, would be used for this sort of thing?
No, that, that position was really for the abatement purposes, abandoned vehicles that are left. So the title of parking enforcement on that specific position is, because that's really what they're doing. They're, they're driving around looking for parking violations, so the title fit. But that specific position was for vehicle abatement.
That was through the Measure A funds?
The Measure R, correct. Yes. Oh, no, I'm sorry, it's not Measure R. I apologize. Measure A, yes. I'm, I'm sorry.
So are your main problems on Tuesdays and Wednesdays? Is that the concern?
That, that is our biggest concentration of vehicles. And we've spent the last two months tracking that information. We've had up to fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen cars per day. Some of them are repeat offenders and they do not live in our area. And they're just coming in and some of them are registered to the same address. So it is specifically, those cars are parked there specifically for that purpose.
I just have concerns about the idea of taking people's personal property. I, I mean, I oftentimes, I just, we have on weekends particularly, a number of city-owned lots that sit empty, that could be used for allowing some, a place for people to park vehicles for sale. Because some communities, I mean, up in Rockland, they run used car sales in the, in the college parking lot and allow people to come and bring their cars. I mean, I guess my concern is, is that we start passing ordinances, we start going down this road of, of people's vehicles and we, at the same time, we ask people to come to our community on Tuesday and Wednesdays to spend, to spend their money. And yes, I understand that, I understand the safety issue, but I just have an issue about taking people, about impoundment. And I understand that we aren't wanting to head down that road, but that doesn't mean that we won't head down that road. Because now we have an ordinance passed that allows us to do that. I've often wondered, you know, if, like I said, we have these empty city lots that we could designate as a place, you know, to have a used car kind of sales going on.
I find it amazing how much compliance you get when you just ask people. And in this case, we would have to do it in a written form, you know, and that's really what a warning is. Please follow our ordinance. That's what we're asking of them. So, and that really is our intent. It's certainly not to take people's property. And then, you know...
I mean, what is the concern really? I mean, people are parking on a public street, they have a for sale sign on their car. I guess I'm not really sure I understand, Chief, what the concern is. I mean, people walking in the streets, yeah, I understand, that's a safety issue. But people walk in the streets all the time. And so I, I guess I'm just really not clear about what the issue is about somebody parking their car on the street with a, with a for sale sign.
It's the, it's, it's the distracted driving, the people walking in the streets when people are driving, so...
We have things that are actually identified where it's been a, a problem? I mean, where something really has happened? Or is it just the perception that something might happen?
No, it's, it's a lot of cops standing out there watching and they've seen it in the past in different areas and stuff. So, you know, they're, we're just trying to identify and prohibit, or not prohibit, but prevent something from happening specifically to those areas. It's a heavy concentration of people walking every single day during market days in that area. And they're distracted. They're looking other ways, they're staring at those cars instead of paying attention to where it is that they should be driving. And so just one more distraction and a whole world of distractions out there. And so if we are able to let people know what, you know, hey, it's prohibited in our city and here's your written warning, perhaps they won't do it. Or perhaps we get a lot less and there's a lot less distracted driving and then we won't have to worry about responding to somebody getting hit by a car. That's really what our concern is. That's our biggest concern from the Police Department and the public safety part of it. So I, I go out there on Tuesday and Wednesday and I see all types of kids and their families walking around and, and they're running all over the place and they got handfuls of stuff that they just bought and they're not holding on to their kids. And so, you know, I'm just trying to make that area a little safer.
Yeah. I'm just not sure it's the cars.
Well, also, it also leaves open parking for people going to the market rather than someone trying to sell their car.
Why are you sure these people aren't at the market?
Well, from what I've heard, it sounds like we have some regulars that move cars in here every Tuesday and Wednesday to sell cars, is what it sounds like.
Having an official used car sale.
Is what it kind of sounds like.
Mayor, Councilmember Hewer, the other item that's actually written in, into the ordinance as well, is that visual blight. We have, you know, the cars that are starting to stack up on the street and it's coming down by, you know, City Hall, C Street, you know, on those market days and even off-market days, we're starting to see more and more cars, you know, with those for sale signs and it's that, you know, view and that look is, you know, our residents and customers coming to our community. You know, it looks like a, kind of a stacked up, you know, of car lot. And, you know, I don't know that that's, you know, what we want, you know, that visual appearance to be, you know, for our community.
Well, I understand, Mr. Palazzo, but, but the market in itself is not a real visually pleasing sight most of the time. I mean, you know, so if we're going to use the, we're going to say that the cars are offensive, I mean, we, it's not a real pretty site most, most Saturday, most Tuesdays and Wednesdays either.
Okay. Any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion with Vice Mayor Payne and a second by Councilmember Campion. Any further discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
No.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Passes three and one. Moving on to Public Works. Award of Task Order and Related Budget Adjustment for Consultant Services to Prepare Required Wastewater Treatment Special Studies. Mr. Winkler.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, on the Public Works item tonight, this is a task order that's being recommended for, to address requirements within our current recently issued renewed wastewater discharge permit for wastewater treatment plant. This is John Griffin who's going to make a presentation and I don't know what this was about.
Good evening, Mayor. Sorry, a little too loud there. As Steve mentioned, we're here to request approval of a task order to West Coast for the wastewater treatment plant special studies. In our resolution, there was a recommendation that five total recommendations for award of the task order and the funding and all those actions that go along with it. And those are summarized here on the slide. So you're probably asking yourself, you know, we did, why do we need to do these studies? What's driving it and what are we hoping to achieve? So as Steve mentioned, the, all these studies, some annual, some one-time studies, every single one is a requirement for us to complete within the five-year timeframe in our permit. As I mentioned, there are several that are completed annually. that are completed annually, operations plans, studies on land application of our ethylene and bio-solids. And some are one-time studies, and one example is our zinc pollution prevention plan. In our last five years, we submitted all of our sampling results, and we had a one, one instance in five years where zinc exceeded a certain standard, which then put us under a threshold to complete several studies, one of those being our pollution prevention plan. So, for the next year, we are going out and collecting samples at our water sites in our sewer system, both in commercial areas, residential areas, and at a number of our industrial users, to identify if there's any locations that are discharging zinc that might be the source of why we exceed our limit. And that's a, a full calendar year study, just to collect samples, and then months thereafter, channelize the data, and submit it to the state for their review and approval. That's just one example of a number of studies that we're going to be completing over the next five years, along with West Coast assistance. Recognizing that there's a cost, where we can, we're doing some of the work. So, for example, with this pollution prevention plan, we're, our field crews are going out to the various sites and collecting all the samples on. And then obviously the lab costs therefore, but to save some money, we are using our crews where we can.
What is the effect of zinc? What does it do to the water?
It is more of an aquatic toxicity concern, and so that's what the driver is and our permit is.
It goes through the rivers and affects the fishes?
Correct.
John, on the same, the same, same question on zinc, in terms of the drinking water testing, do we exceed zinc limits there, or do we have zinc issues?
The drinking water standard is a little high, is higher than the aquatic standard. So, we're within our limits in our drinking water system, but it's a lower limit because of aquatic toxicity.
So, does it seem like there is a, a, a point source for the zinc entering the system? Say, a user, an industrial user, or something that's discharging zinc at some level?
That's the purpose for the, for example, the pollution prevention plan, is we're collecting samples from not only our water facilities, to see if it's reduced from our groundwater, if one of our industrial customers is discharging zinc as part of their process.
Is zinc naturally occurring? I mean, I know the arsenic, our issue with arsenic, because it's a naturally occurring. Is zinc naturally occurring also?
Zinc is.
Yeah, maybe just to clarify, you get some zinc from groundwater, depending on the aquifer you're pulling from, but it can also be introduced by commercial, industrial, or other uses that are flushing chemical processes down into our wastewater treatment plant. And the study that's actually underway as we speak, and several local businesses have, we've requested permission to sample on-site, and we're trying to find out, is there a point source beyond the water source, or is it something that we can work with a specific, a commercial customer, or school, or, or, you know, park system, if there's some source there that we could, rather than do a one-size-fits-all, look to target the actual source, and work with that point source to, to address it.
John, I understand that you said zinc that we, in our drinking water, is allowed at a higher content than what we discharge. And it seems logically that if we have more coming in, that we're gonna have more going out. Is that not the case?
It's roughly the case, yes.
But what you're looking for is a specific location that is discharging more-
We, correct, there might be, as part of their industrial process. They may use zinc, and then when they clean their equipment, that it's concentrated. And that may increase what, above and beyond what we have in our water system.
What would that be in? Would it be in paint, or anything like that?
There are plating facilities, plating facilities, you know, any type of, for example, any kind of steel plating, or that might be a source. And so, it's one of the sites that we're looking at is any type of plating facility.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, the next question is you're asking, we're asking ourselves is, so what's the cost going to be, and how are we gonna pay for it? So, the total cost of this five-year study is $380,000, and that includes a contingency. And for this fiscal year's budget, next fiscal year's budget, we include $80,000 annually. And we're recommending that we award all five years at the same time, again, because, you know, some of these studies are multiple years. It just is easier, more efficient to award all five years at one time. So, to help us accomplish that, there's also a request of a special appropriation of $220,000 to cover years three, four, and five. So, with that, that summarizes our report, and we're here to answer the questions that you may have. Thank you.
Questions from council?
I just have one. It says that we're gonna have to have a supplemental budget appropriation of $220,000. Is that gonna create any problem?
At the time, we put together our budget recommendations for the wastewater fund, we had not yet concluded the RFP process, so we didn't even know how much money would ultimately be required. We sort of took our estimate, divided it by five, and put in the first two-year budgets of our currently approved biannual budget process, $80,000 each year. Now that we have proposals and looking at some of the costs, those are some big costs. And we want to make sure that those costs are reserved, and, and, you know, one way to do that is to go ahead and appropriate the funding and encumber that to, to a contract upfront, much as we would a large CIP project that is multiple years, is we actually look five years out and bring those costs forward as part of the budget process. And so, the recommended actions would take the $80,000 that's already approved for year two, move it to year one, which is current, and then add another $220,000 to the $80,000 that's already in year one. And that would provide the five years of funding that we'd, with approval of the recommended actions, we'd have permission to then authorize West Coast to begin on those studies. Now, five years of studies, approaching $400,000, you know, what happens if we are not satisfied with progress, or with the results, or if other regulatory things change? We actually have, we built into our master agreements for this task order is, with five days' notice, we can terminate this at any time, even though you give us approval tonight. If something changes, we can certainly stop that process. So, we're not obligating, that, that there's no escape from five years of expenses, but we are asking that we be allowed to encumber that, take it out of our reserves. There are available funds in our reserves for this amount of money, and that allows to sort of be efficient and not have to make multiple RFPs, and multiple awards, and multiple budget process. We already have this, sort of the five years of mandatory testing accounted for in our budget.
So, we have plenty of, well, maybe not plenty, but we have money in our reserves-
And part of that was, yes, based on, you had some prior direction, and we're in the process of claiming several million dollars of sunk costs from the wastewater treatment plant, SRF loan, that, that we're gonna be reimbursing the, the reserves, and some of the money will be available from that fund as well.
That's coming out of the wastewater fund. Oh, seven.
Correct.
I just have another, so I understanding this completely. So, when I read this, what I understand is that this is being required, the studies are being required by, by the, by the Regional Water Quality Board?
Yes.
To have gotten our permit that we got in December 2015, these were requirements that were required at that time?
Correct.
Okay.
And each of those has a specific deadline. Each of those also has a specific deadline.
Mayor?
We have to do this.
I'm just kind of stepping, and I should know and answer to this question, but, you know, the budget appropriation, is that currently available in the budget, or is that?
This, this $220,000 would come from the unappropriated fund balance in the wastewater plant, treatment plant, wastewater fund.
So, that is budgeted, you know, not looking at future budgets, that's budgeted within this fiscal-
Well, what they're proposing to do is budget it within fiscal '17, is that where you're proposing it?
It would be actually, yes, this current fiscal year would be the approval. And the estimate is that at the end of 2017, excluding this action that's being recommended, that, that our ending fund balance at the end of this fiscal year in the wastewater fund, with those reimbursements coming back for the SRF loan, would be about, approaching ten and a half million dollars after we recoup the money that's already been spent.
Essentially, I think that one way of looking at what they're attempting to do is treat this consultant study, or study conducted by a consultant, the same way you would treat a capital improvement project, which would be to encumber the funds upfront. Is that one way of stating that?
That's understandable, and then those funds would roll over.
And the funds would roll over each year, as the amounts that had not yet been used would roll forward.
So, at some point in time, if we're not happy with the consultant, something happens, we can-
Without cause, five days' notice, we'd have to pay for services rendered today, we can exit this agreement with five days' notice.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, it looks like we can have one motion to cover all five of these items. Do I have a motion?
Some of. Do you want me to read each one?
No, that's fine. Have a motion by Vice Mayor Payne. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hewer. We don't have any further discussion. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Laurel, you may now speak. Okay, moving on to City Clerk's report. Although M1, we did postpone until the next council meeting, I do have one speaker sheet on this. Ms. Daly, do you want to come forward and speak on it, or wait till next meeting?
Very good.
Okay, we'll go ahead and hold this for the next meeting. All right, moving on. Comments by staff. Ms. Boyd?
I don't have anything to report tonight, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Arias?
Just a quick development update. Starbucks Shell is in plan check. The Taco Bell squeeze-in permit is ready to pick up. If you've been out at the Rite Aid site, Twicken Corrids, you've probably seen it fenced off, getting ready to build. We have four subdivisions under construction, Creekside 3, Janine Court, Emerald Park, and River Oaks 3B. That totals about 235 residential units, so they're in various stages of development in those subdivisions. And then in tentative maps that are working to go final, you have Morally Estates, Cedar Flats Estates, Dry Creek Oaks, and Fairway Oaks. And that total is about 550 units. So, you know, residential construction's still going strong, and really it's been kind of driving us.
Awesome. Mr. Winkler?
A few quick updates. We've been through the drought. We were reporting on monthly conservation stats. We have now self-certified, based on sustainability of our groundwater for an extended drought, we have now self-certified that we do not have a required mandate at this time. We're waiting for the state to agree with us on that. That said, we have recommended that we stay at stage two, which is a downgrade from stage three, because we've still got that 2020 goal we reported on earlier that we need to meet, and we achieved that goal early by meeting approximately a 32% mandate over the last six months, and a 39% mandate before that. So, for June, we actually hit 25% compared to the, the two-year target that we've been averaging against with the new requirements. So, we're still doing well. We encourage the citizens to keep up the good work. Second item is, as many citizens have recognized, we've got a, a rolling series of railroad crossing improvements. That is, those are not roadway improvements, it's UPR mainline rail improvements that are following on the previous track and tie work that was done here about six months ago. And now they're coming back and replacing the crossings. And we are sort of in a reactive mode to their work, and we, we then have to put back the paving afterwards. So, the crossings will not be really smooth when they're done, and we're gonna watch those. There will be some settlement period as the trains run in on the new ballast, and we'll certainly come back. We've got some rather abrupt drop-offs on some of the new work, and we'll be working to correct that after the rails sort of settle in for their final position. But, that, that'll be sort of one week, a week and a half closures at each of the crossings. They're working on Crossing 3. They've done L, they've done A Street, now we're on C Street. I believe the next one will be the F Street Crossing.
Keith, I wanted to ask, has there been any increase in accidents or traffic problems during this time? I, I know I witnessed a collision at the Third and, I think, C Street when it was closed off. And I've just wondered, have you noticed any increase in traffic problems because of this?
No, I think the signage and, and the notifications and everything else, it's been really, really good. And the way it's been advertised, and the detours and everything else have been really effective. So, I, I, we have not seen the increase in accidents.
Good.
Mr. Clarkson, you've been sitting there very quietly. Anything to say?
We just have a lot of things going on. We do, we do see an end in, in the wastewater treatment plant project that's been going on for nearly five years now. And we'll be seeing that within the next two months, and things are really moving along with the process control and such. So, it's in a good transition that we're gonna be having over the next couple of months with engineering, getting, for the Public Works Department, get all of engineering under the deputy director position. So, that'll work for whoever the new person will be sitting in that spot in the future.
And I suppose-
I have a good staff here.
I ought to formally announce, I should have had that on my radar. We have appointed Mark Clarkson to be the interim deputy director to replace Gwen Owens, who has taken a career opportunity with the city of Asheville. So, Mark is gonna be taking a hard look at how we're organized and our efficiencies in the engineering group as well.
Congratulations, Mark.
Awesome. Is this us? Anything? Mr. Solis?
I do. I'd like to talk about the Independence Day celebration. This is our first council meeting since that event. And I just want to thank some of our sponsors. Cow Waste, without Mr. Becarez's help, this event couldn't happen. I'd like to thank him personally. Smud, PG&E, F&amp;M Bank, and Brenda Renfro, who does the parade. She just continues to provide a better and better parade every year. Robin Nelson and Sharon Hafner for the 5K Ton Run, and then my staff, they're incredible. And then the help from police and Public Works for the street closures. So, I'll be bringing back a formal report, hopefully next council meeting, just to go over our expenditures and revenues for that event.
Awesome. Brenda does a beautiful job every year, and it gets better and better.
And the fireworks were amazing. The fireworks display was wonderful this year.
Keep getting more and more compliments about that.
Yeah, it was great.
Well, the only thing I want to say is that the last two weeks in our nation has been very, very difficult. But what I do want to say is that the out, the outpouring of support from the Galt community has been, well, there's no other word but incredible. The, they, every day, somebody's coming to the police department saying, "Thank you", leaving us food, gifts, handmade gifts. And I just want to thank the community for that, because, you know, it, it really does make it hard, because every community is, and police departments are wondering. And so, the morale in our department is high, and I have to attribute a lot of that to the support of the community. So, just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
And to continue on with the community sport, National Night Out is on August 2nd, and TJ has just been, done an absolutely amazing job of putting this together. And so, we're really looking forward to that.
Mr. Plaza?
City has an amazing staff. We're getting a lot done, a lot going on. So, just, community, council has questions, give me a call.
Okay. Mr. Rudolph? Councilmember Campion, all by yourself down there, something to say?
Sitting snack on the 20th.
30th.
30th, excuse me. It is 30th. Look at the ticket. It's a lot of fun. People ought to try and come out. It's good. It's at the McFarlane Ranch.
If you'd like wine, come on out.
Come out and visit one of the jewels of our community.
Absolutely. Councilmember Hewer?
Yes, I'd like to ask for staff to bring back a report regarding the Lincoln Highway and the signage. Yes, I'd like to ask for staff to bring back a report regarding the Lincoln Highway and the signage. It sounded as if, sounded as if they were going to donate the signage, but I would also like to, depending on the staff report, use, see about using discretionary funds to fund the installation, or any of that that's required, so if that would be part of the staff report, the cost that it would take to move forward in the staff report regarding that.
Do you have that consensus of the council?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You beat me to it.
The other thing I just wanted to comment on is that, you know, I think it's wonderful that the community continues to meet the conservation goals, but I guess I would like to see us as a community, or as a council, if there's something, I don't know, I drive in our community, and so many people have let their lawns and their landscaping go completely dead, and it really does affect the look of our neighborhoods, and so it does concern me whether there's a way for us to be able to move forward in helping people have zero scape landscaping, or something, some way to improve the looks of our neighborhoods, because some of our neighborhoods are, I don't know if it's the water meters, or, and the drought combined, but many of our homes and neighborhoods that used to be, you know, pretty attractive neighborhoods have turned into pretty unattractive neighborhoods. Weeds growing, not being mowed, it's pretty distressing on my part. I just find it really distressing, because I'm always really proud of the appearance of our community, and it's, this whole has really, really hurt the appearance of our community in those areas, so I don't know if there's just some thing that's out there, we can move in some direction or something. I just, it continues to be a pretty big concern. It really distresses me when I drive around our neighborhoods to see what some of our neighborhoods are looking like. And I'd also like to also thank, that I thought the Fourth of July, the Independence Day celebration, Armando, you and your staff, Brenda, did an amazing job. It was really fun. I only heard really positive comments from the community. I think everyone that came out had a really good time. I would like to comment also that I think that that, the parade route is a perfect route. I think all parades should be that route. That we really, I mean, I think it's manageable, but at the same time, big enough that there's plenty of parking, and the community comes out, so I'd really like us to come back with maybe looking at what could be more of an official parade route for our town.
I think it's a great idea, especially for like the one at Christmas. That is an extremely long route, and I think, I think it promotes more of a community effort by having it in downtown like that.
Yeah, I think people come out, they enjoy each other, they get to spend time together. It promotes our downtown. I think it adds a real sense of community, and so I'd really like to see staff look into bringing that back to us as more of an official parade route. I know the prior police chief had shared concerns with me regarding the safety of some of these larger parade routes, and the safety of being able to shut down our roads and have people be out safely, and adequate lighting. Sometimes the Christmas one, there's on streets that don't have adequate lighting. I'd really like to see us move forward on that. Okay, thank you.
The council members had a shaking, yes, on that one.
Head shaking.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Well, first I want to say I agree with Councilmember Hewer wholeheartedly on the yards. Yeah, I'm seeing the same thing. Not only are they not watering and letting the grass die, but they're not mowing it, so you just have weeds, so I agree. I'm glad you brought that up. On the other hand, I want to say, at the community garden on Saturday, we're having our corn roasting celebration. Our corn has grown to the point where it's ready to harvest, and so the gardeners are having a corn roasting celebration, and you're invited to join us, as well as the neighborhood. I guarantee you, it is as good as sleuth house. And that's it.
Awesome.
But don't come out there on your own, get it.
I just wanted to repeat what's already been said. It was an awesome Fourth of July celebration. I actually were talking to several people in the pool celebration for the fireworks. Some of them were as far north as Redding, some of them as far south as Fresno, so big applause for you on that one, if you're attracting people from that area. Thank you for bringing that up about the Lincoln Highway. It's very nice to have that found out. I'd like to close tonight's meeting by extending our condolences to the families and friends and coworkers of all the law enforcement officers killed recently. We're a small community, and we're an isolated community in some respects, and we are, we are family, and our police department is probably one of the most important things to us in that respect. To all the members of law enforcement, we wish to extend our appreciation and respect for what you do to keep us safe, and we will try our best to keep you safe as well. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.